Welcome to Pasadena Monthly. I'm your host, Justin Chapman. We are all heartbroken over the devastation caused by the Eaton Fire in Altadena and beyond. Today's episode will focus solely on the fire and where we go from here. Our guest today is Nick Arndzen, Vice Chair of the Altadena Town Council, who represents the same district I did when I served on the town council. Officials are saying the LA wildfires, including Palisades, Eaton, and others, which began a couple of weeks ago, may turn out to be the costliest natural disaster in the history of the United States, resulting in an estimated $275 billion in damages, according to AccuWeather. The Eaton Fire by itself is currently the second most destructive California wildfire and the fifth deadliest wildfire, which is not surprising. I've taken a couple of police escorted tours of the damaged areas in Altadena and Upper Hastings Ranch, and it is absolutely devastating. It looks like a war zone, complete with soldiers and Humvees. Less than a week into the new year, and we already reached Berlin 1945 status. Many displaced residents were frustrated they couldn't go back to their homes or neighborhoods for a couple of weeks because crews were looking for human remains, putting out lingering hotspots, completing urban search and rescue operations, clearing hazardous debris, repairing critical infrastructure, and conducting structural assessments. County officials have now let many residents visit their properties in what's called a soft closure, meaning only people with an ID showing their address can enter. Dozens of residents decided not to evacuate and remained behind the National Guard barricade line all along. I grew up in Altadena. I served on the Altadena Town Council, and my family lost two homes, two cars, and just about everything else in this fire. I know others lost more than that, including their lives. The scale is unbelievable. There are so many individual tragedies and lives upended. We're all experiencing communal shock. It is truly sickening seeing my hometown in this much pain, and I don't know where we go from here. There's a lot of talk of rebuilding, but what does that look like? Will affordable fire insurance be available in this area ever again? It might need to be a situation where fire insurance is guaranteed by the state or federal government, like an expanded version of California's Fair Plan, in order to give residents the confidence they need to continue living in a place like this. Because who's to say this doesn't happen again? In that time, people really could lose everything if they don't have insurance. People are also starting to insist that when Altadena does get rebuilt, that power lines get put underground. There are a lot of measures like that that we're gonna have to look at in order to make this town safe again. There's also a growing movement to keep Altadena independent, to encourage people not to sell their land to what may seem like lucrative offers. We're already seeing predatory real estate offers swooping in. Altadena was a special place. It was one of the last truly socio-economically diverse working-class neighborhoods of LA where housing could be somewhat affordable. Is that gonna change? I sure hope not, but I'm not very hopeful. The LA area was, of course, already one of the most expensive housing markets. Now, thousands of former homeowners and renters are looking for housing. With that comes price gouging and rent gouging, which are illegal and should be reported when encountered. In times of tragedy, some people come together and try to help, and others do their damnedest to take advantage. Some are saying it's too early to talk about rebuilding. I don't know the answer to that. Each person will have to make that decision for themselves. While I know Altadena will never be the same again, I'd hate for this to be its final chapter. You can't leave it like this, a scar across the face of the Southland. It's too special not to try to fix it. One reporter asked a man, "What's left of your house?" He said, "Nothing." And "What's left of your life?" "Everything." For those who do choose to rebuild, it is nice to hear local and state leaders saying they're working to make it as easy and quick as possible. Governor Newsom and others loosened environmental permitting and review regulations and will provide property tax relief. The deadline for LA County residents to file their 2024 taxes was extended to October 15th. The State Insurance Commissioner prohibited dropping fire insurance policies for one year. Residents will need every bit of help they can get from their government. There's already talk of the A-word in some circles of Pasadena: annexation. Pasadena has been talking about, and Altadena has been resisting annexation for 100 years. If the county doesn't step up like it says it's going to, that resistance in Altadena will weaken significantly. Keep your eye on that story. In the meantime, the debris removal and cleanup is going to be a long, complicated process. Governments and contractors who work to test, clean, and remove debris need to take extra care not to disperse toxic chemicals into the air that will drift to nearby cities and cause long-term health problems for San Gabriel Valley residents. The air should be constantly tested during this process. Everyone within a few miles of the burn zone should clean up the ash in and around their homes, wearing protective gear, and following all official guidelines to do so properly. Lots of buildings with lead, asbestos, and other chemicals were burnt in this fire. So the air quality and the health hazards posed by the ash, soot, smoke, et cetera, are no joke. You don't want to be careless now and end up with cancer a few years down the road. I didn't see many people wearing masks as it was literally snowing ash down on us in the days after the fire. LA County issued an order prohibiting the cleanup or removal of debris until hazardous materials inspection is completed. The county and the city of Pasadena joined FEMA's hazardous waste removal program, which involves two phases. In Phase 1, which is mandatory and will take a few months, FEMA will remove hazardous waste. In Phase 2, red-tagged sites will be cleared of debris by either the state or federal government. Homeowners must opt into the voluntary program, which is free for them. Officials have completed inspections of more than 95% of the structures in the fire area, and so far, 9,400-plus have been confirmed destroyed. The fire, as of this taping, is more than 89% contained and burned more than 14,000 acres. At least 17 people died in the fire with 20 more still missing. But how did this happen? In short, it was very clearly climate change. We knew we'd become climate refugees at some point. I didn't think it was gonna happen this fast, but here we are. It happened so fast, and the winds and firestorm were so furious that the communities and their path didn't even stand a chance. Some residents claimed the SoCal Edison Tower in Eaton Canyon was the start of the blaze. SCE said the Altadena winds weren't strong enough to turn off the power at those towers. With 60 to 100 mile-per-hour winds in such dry conditions as we had, with such low humidity, with such a long drought, it was potentially predictable. That will be looked into, and lawsuits have already been filed. Another question I had is evacuation orders. On the Genesis Protect and WatchDuty apps, which show the evacuation warning zones and mandatory evacuation order zones, on the night of Tuesday, January 7th, all of the areas west of Lake Avenue, all the way up to the mountains, were not even in a yellow warning zone. Everything to the east of Lake was under mandatory evacuation since about 7:30 PM Tuesday. And with the fire spreading so fast, why weren't the areas to the west of Lake at least under a warning? That night, I remember thinking, "They're not gonna mess around. If the area is under any kind of threat, they will at least put out an evacuation warning." Well, my family lived west of Lake, near Farnsworth Park, never got that warning. That neighborhood never turned yellow until it was too late. No one came to the door or announced to the neighborhood what was about to happen. So my family went to sleep that night thinking they at least had more time. They woke up at 3:00 in the morning Wednesday with flaming embers flying over the house, and they had to scramble just to grab a few photos of the dog and get out the door. Evacuation orders finally went out about 3:30 AM Wednesday. Now, that house, my childhood home that my family has owned since 1991, is completely burned to the ground, along with every other house in the area west of Lake Avenue. And the LA Times reported that all 17 known deaths from the Eaton Fire happened west of Lake Avenue. What happened there? It is astonishing also how far south into the urban area the fire reached, destroying such historic buildings and establishments as Fox's Restaurant, the Bunny Museum, the Altadena Community Church, St. Mark's School, Waldorf, Avacyn, Odyssey, Altadena Hardware, Rancho Bar, Steve's Bikes, Farnsworth Park, Altadena Town and Country Club, Zorthian Ranch, where I got married, and so much more. There were a few lucky survivors, such as the Altadena Library, Community Center, Sheriff's Station, most of Christmas Tree Lane, including the Model Railroad House, Webster's, El Patron, Bailey and Mansion, and others. Thank you to a few local heroes, particularly Edgar McGregor, a 24-year-old climate specialist and environmentalist, who warned people to leave their homes the evening of January 7th, long before any government agency or firefighting officials did. He's been credited with saving hundreds of lives, including some good friends of mine. So thank you. I know nothing lasts forever, but the pain is intense and seems to grow more acute as time goes on. But while we may have lost the community, the physical spaces, the neighborhoods, we didn't lose our community. In crises like these, you see the worst of people, but you also see the best of people. We're grateful for all the love and support that many people have offered. We hope that support will continue because for something that happened in a matter of a few hours, the impacts of this disaster are gonna be felt on an individual, familial, and community level for a long, long time. Things will never be the same again. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try to retain Altadena's unique small-town charm as we work to rebuild. Let's welcome our guest, Altadena Town Council Vice Chair Nick Arndzen. Thank you so much for taking the time to come on the show, especially during this extremely difficult time.
I'm glad to be here. I mean, locally is important, and that's what you are. So I appreciate the time.
Absolutely. Nick is originally from Iowa and serves as the program coordinator for a CDC-recognized diabetes prevention program. He's also been a director of film and theater, head writer for numerous projects, SAG and AEA, actor, property manager, manager of a recording studio, and office manager for a studio accounting team. So I know you lost your house. My family lost our house as well. I know what you're going through, and unfortunately, what most of Altadena is going through right now. You represent Census Track 4602 on the town council, the same district that I represented back in the day, in 2005 era. Before we get into that, can you tell us a little bit about your life leading up to moving to Altadena and why you chose to live here?
Oh, sure. I mean, it's bittersweet now because what we wanted was a bit of a village atmosphere to raise our children. My husband and I recognized that, you know, our more urban kind of setting wasn't gonna be what we wanted the kids to grow up in. We had the particular challenge of being a gay couple and trying to identify a community that would be open, accepting, kind of feel like a small town, and that's not easy to do. So we stumbled across Altadena, and we realized this is exactly the place we're looking for. So I still hold to that. It's exactly the place we want to be, and it will be going forward.
Can you tell us, if you're comfortable, a little bit about what you lost and what Altadena lost?
It's an easy answer. We lost everything. I think we got out with some photos that weren't digitized and a quick grab of some folders of important documents. And we got out with nothing and everything. Everything we needed was us and our animals. And we got out of their safe, and we, kind of side note, left the bunny behind at first. And getting out a little further from the house, I said, "This isn't... I'm not gonna be able to come back later." Because that was gonna be a hassle, you know, to round the bunny up, as well as two dogs and a cat. And I said to my daughter, "We split up in two cars. She's 18 now. You're an adult. I'm gonna go back into this, what potentially is gonna be much dangerous, more dangerous. We're about a mile away, and it's not looking good, but I gotta go back for that bunny." "Are you in it? Because you're an adult. You need to make this call with me." She made the call. We got the bunny. By then, the power was out. Flames were up the street, and it was harrowing. People were... You know, it's what you would expect in an apocalyptic kind of setting. And I just tried to stay calm through it, but we got out. Everything we've lost, we're hoping to gain back in other ways.
And what about Altadena as a whole?
It's up to over 9,000 structures destroyed, which is of the barely... You know, just over 1,700,000 structures. So those 9,000-plus structures represent half the town. Half of Altadena is gone. It's overwhelming. It's so overwhelming to see it, and I don't know if your family has had a chance to see it in person. It's so overwhelming that there's a disconnect. Like, this does not look like... I know it's my neighborhood, but I just see remnants. And that's painful, but I think that vision, combined with that overwhelming number, along with the deaths, it kind of makes you numb now. And I was saying that we're still trying to find housing, as everybody is, which is a whole other conversation because you see these faces of other desperate Altedinas. Many that you remember their faces. You may not know them directly, but you've seen them around town. We're all just so desperate and immediately have a click of, "I know you. I know your pain, and I want you to not get this because I need this house." And it's just terrible. It's... I hope that's not what the town is leaning toward because we're told by the mayor of Paradise, "Be prepared. Your town is gonna turn on itself. Be prepared for being a bridge to make sure they stay cohesive and united." Because that will happen, and I believe that will happen, but there are hard days ahead. So as far as loss, it's so overwhelming, I can't really sit in it right now until some logistics are squared away.
Yeah, it's so surreal, and the scale is so unbelievable. It's hard to wrap your head around it still, even a couple of weeks later. So the town council's meeting tonight for the first time since the fire? What do you anticipate the town council discussing and doing tonight?
We meet every month with a very set agenda. We made the decision early on that we will continue to meet because obviously, town halls, meetings, all of those are important, but that we would look at our agenda and try to... While we couldn't go back to normal with what we'd normally talk about, let's try to have the same sort of structure, take away the things that just aren't necessary, and focus on information. But also, where we usually have public comment, that would be where people can present things to us, but we don't have a conversation with them about it. It's just the nature of council meetings. That will turn into a Q&amp;A. It's all virtual, so Pasadena Media is doing us the favor of helping us set that up and enabling the chat so that people can put in their questions, and we can moderate them and answer them as we can online. And if we don't have the answer, ask one of the experts that will be joining us. That, you know, includes our supervisor, Barker, includes Chief Springle. You know, we've got all the leads that will have, hopefully, the solid and most up-to-date information.
Let's talk a little bit about why this happened, and was it preventable? Were there mistakes in the response along the way?
That's a really much deeper question. Was it preventable? I think every fire probably could be preventable to a degree. Talking to our emergency responders, what they were facing with this firestorm in a very real way, nobody could stop it. The elements that happened and whatever started it, and I won't speculate. However it started, once it was started, there was just no stopping it, the winds, with everything going on. You can dig deeper into where the blame is, and I don't know. So I'm waiting to find out as a homeowner myself and move forward on that because I won't hesitate to fight for my community, for the answers, and then the compensation, and then the fixes for looking ahead. But I will say, what's really just heartbreaking is that the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan, which is a comprehensive look at 20 to 30 years into our future, what will improve our city, what will improve our way of life, and what will protect us more from things like this, was just unanimously recommended by our council. It was unanimously voted and approved by the supervisors. It was recognized that there were incredible measures to be taken that would decrease density, that would approach in a very smart way how to make our city more fire-safe. Never would have stopped this fire. But there are measures, once we know the cause, that can be taken, and it will be worth the cost. And we'll be told, "This is far too costly." But we're in a position now, and hopefully in the months to come, to say, "Cost can't be something possibly can be telling our town." Not right now. So we're gonna leverage that suffering that the world is seeing, and we're gonna leverage that power that that brings to this town. And again, I go back to being united. When these neighborhoods, these churches, these organizations start coming against each other because they very justifiably want to make sure their flocks, their neighbors, and their groups are protected, we need to stand together and figure out that we're all equitably protected. And that's tough in some situations when you have areas that have been historically neglected because they carry with them that pain and that fear. That happened this week, and that trauma isn't as easily gone away and trust and have faith that they'll be taken care of because that's historically not what's happened.
And along those lines, one of the big questions I have about this is that, you know, east of Lake Avenue, there were evacuation warnings or evacuation orders. But west of Lake Avenue, you know, at 7:30 on January 7th, east of Lake was under order. West of Lake, in our neighborhood, it wasn't even under a warning till 3:30 in the morning on January 8th. Have you heard about what's happened there, and what was that disconnect? By the time people woke up at 3:00 in the morning, it was too late. The warning still hadn't come through.
I'm really glad you asked because that's on my mind, literally, in the past hour. Conversations are being had because we're being approached with that angle for news stories. So I would start by saying, I hesitate to lean into rumor or lean into facts that are not complete, but that drives me nuts. I mean, if that comes to be true... So what I'm trying to do is get to the facts. And what I've been asking the council, like PPEs were a problem. These are protective gear to go into the area. There was a depletion yesterday, and people were entering with just masks or just gloves. And there's a lot more necessary to keep them safe. So as far as the answers to those, I always try to get on the ground. And when I can't, I ask the fellow council members, "Is anybody on the ground? Can you confirm this?" What you're asking specifically about, I in no way want to avoid because I want the answers as quickly as possible. So unfortunately, I don't have a clear picture on that. That's something I'm trying to gather. It's just like you. I think I've probably heard from similar sources, and that's gonna... That's gonna be a big deal. So I will say the two things I've heard are, on one end, exactly what you described, that these emergency alerts went out. And on the other end, there were... You know, I know on my phone I was getting alerts. I don't know who else was, but on our block, I know what I was getting. But I also know I'm informed to download Genesis and WatchDuty. And if I didn't have that, I knew I was getting these automatic alerts, similar to Amber Alerts, where it goes out to everybody. What I am hearing firsthand is that some people weren't. If that's widespread, that's what we need to find out right now. And if it is widespread, that's what we need answers on. So perhaps tonight is time to start asking those questions and getting... Right now, I'm trying to encourage council members to get solidified. Not my friends, said their parents, but talk to them directly, which is necessary anyway because they need to be... We can't knock on the 5,000-plus doors that we represent. First of all, not all of them are there. And secondly, wherever we do find them, that's an overwhelming amount. So we're leaning into... You know, we were protective of Altadena early on. We didn't want photo ops with people outside of Altadena, kind of co-opting our pain and suffering to do whatever they needed to do politically or for funds, but we're recognizing we need them. And we need them to come in and help us do this outreach. As a volunteer organization, the council has so little means, as you well know. But what we do have is a passion and on-the-ground. We have boots on the ground, and we can help direct them to the neighbors that need it the most. But even we aren't aware of that. We just don't have the means to do that extensive outreach.
What are your thoughts on rebuilding? Some people want to move away. Some said rebuild right away. And others are like, "It's too soon to be talking about that." Where do you stand?
I'll say first and foremost, what's incredible about Altadena and the citizens of Altadena is how unique and individual they are. I imagine many people would say this about their communities, but you know, look me in the eye. I mean, if they are like us, great, because I love that about us. We have our own opinions. We're passionate, but we are compassionate. So I will say on the offset, we need to recognize everybody has their own journey in responding to this, taking their time, not feeling rushed into having to jump into, whether it's insurance or lawsuits or community building. I keep telling people, "Those will be there in the weeks and months to come." And we're not gonna say no to anybody to be part of those conversations. No legal person will say no to somebody who wants to be part of a potential legal battle. And if somebody's telling you, "You gotta sign up right now," that's who I'd walk away from. Getting to your original question, I personally plan to rebuild. I plan to stand firmly on that ground, feeling safe with what we've rebuilt and the extended measures beyond the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan that we've taken. I'd like to revisit that, make it stronger. It was already approved, but I'd like to see if we can have some amendments to it, not because it was weak, but because now we know more. I would like to make sure that the town has a say in what this town is, and I would like to lean into the social capital of what we've got going on and remind people that, again, the more we unite, and while we might not agree on all the specifics, our voice combined will be much stronger. And if it comes down to our bodies blocking anything, starting construction, because it's not the way we want it to be, we'll go as far as we need to go. But we're gonna make sure the West Side's taken care of. We're gonna make sure the generational Black and Brown families are given equitable, not equal, but equitable attention and funds. And we're gonna make sure the town as a whole is built in a way that we can be proud of and at least start to recognize for our own comfort.
Yeah, absolutely. And what are some of the things that folks will need in place to have confidence to rebuild? Buyer insurance, underground power lines, things of that nature?
Yeah, it's all about making sure they feel comfortable and that they have trust. They will need a number of things, but the first things that come to mind, they will need trusted leaders that they already have trust in, passing on word to them that those leaders have vetted and trusted. So that is down to me and the rest of the town council and all of the elected officials outside of Altadena. They're going to have to reach out to those leaders, as we were today, and recognize, "Hey, in this scramble, we might not have been doing a great job to connect with you, but we recognize we need you. You need us. How can we work together? How can you speak to the people that trust you in a way that you believe efforts are on their way, and that convinces them so they have less stress that indeed those efforts are coming?" They also need us to take action that proves it. They need us in these coming days and in the past two weeks to have proven it. And I might not have proven it in my scramble, but we, again, are a volunteer organization that are doing our best. We've gotta do better. I mean, that'll be the thing across the board. As much as you're doing and as hard as you're working, you have to work not just hard, but you have to work smart. And working smart means slowing down and doing it right. And slowing down is difficult for people to hear right now. I'll just tell you personally, because it was really touching to me, a major celebrity reached out that has an extreme reach and power that very specifically said, "Here's why I'm calling, and here's why I got ahold of you. It seems like you're doing outreach, and you're trying to make sure Altadena is being kept in the spotlight." And that's gonna be painful because people will be like, "Why do you keep putting yourself out there?" That's... I'll continue to do that, and I'll continue to try to make sure we take interviews and that we are in the forefront. But she in particular said, "So here's why I'm calling you." Me, and then she name drops some beautiful names, want to get as much funding as possible to the Black and Brown families because we know what you've been saying is that they've been historically neglected. So that group in particular is going to be hesitant to believe that help is coming. But more importantly, they're going to have people approaching them, swooping in to buy up their properties with dollar amounts that will be hard to resist. Number one, I don't judge anyone taking them up on that. You've gotta do what you have to do right now to take care of your family. But number two, I hear what this person is saying and their group is saying. So my point to her was, what can we do now? Because they're hurting now, and they're desperate now. They need food. They need safety. How in the world can we convince them that holding on and "here's what you need now" is going to be enough? Because they're going to remember that the past 100 years and the past entire history of our country has pushed them aside, and anything that was promised to them didn't count. And I'm talking about people who serve their country. I'm talking about people who live their lives in service to their community and just people who are living their lives in general. They have been historically abused and neglected. And how in the world can I convince them? Certainly not my white face is gonna convince them because I'm, you know, that's BS. You know, this is another guy making claims. So I'm trying to make a concerted effort of knowing who's going to listen to them and realizing that that can't possibly be me. And I haven't felt their pain, so why should it be me? It should be somebody in their community, and we should service that person and those leaders and push them to the top, push them in front of us, make them the voice of that community because that's what's gonna get their voices heard.
Yeah, absolutely. Such a complicated situation that's just been compounded by this issue. Nick, I so appreciate you taking the time to come on the show and talk about this. There's so much more to talk about, of course. Altadena is such a special place, and through your efforts and through the whole community, I hope we hold on to that uniqueness about Altadena. And, you know, my best to you and your family as you're struggling through this. We're right there with you, and let's keep in touch. And this is gonna be a long process, but thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, and I'd be happy to come back and bring some of those leaders back that can speak directly.
Great. Thank you so much. Before we go, here is this month in Pasadena history. It was this month in 1889 when abolitionist Owen Brown died in Pasadena. Last month, we talked a little bit about Owen Brown, and this month, I want to provide some more info. It's been reported, though I haven't personally confirmed, that the historical Owen Brown grave site in the hills of Altadena survived the fire. Owen, son of abolitionist John Brown, died of pneumonia in Pasadena on January 8th, 1889, at the home of his sister Ruth Brown Townsend. A newspaper called his funeral "A Historic Day For Pasadena." It was the largest ever held in Pasadena at that time with about 2,000 people, nearly the entire population of the city. The procession marched up to Little Round Top Hill in west Altadena in the meadows, where he had asked to be buried near his cabin overlooking Southern California. Thank you all so much for joining me for this episode of Pasadena Monthly. Tune in every fourth Friday. Tune in every fourth Friday of the month at 5:00 PM. Learn more at passadina media dot org and justindouglaschapman dot com. Drop me a line at jchapman at cityofpassadena dot net. See you next time.